Yes, good evening, and this is our first meeting as a 14th Council of the Committee of the Whole of Council. Tonight, we'll, we're going to go through different reports from different departments within, within the town. I've asked that the councilors, Rumbold, Winters, and Deputy Mayor Compton-Hobbs present their reports this evening. And following this meeting this evening, we'll have a, we'll go into a discussion afterwards dealing with some other, it's a closed meeting, I've seen the CAO tell me to use the right terminology, closed meeting following the meeting tonight. So without further ado, we'll get started, and I'll call the meeting to order. Okay, so the first thing on the agenda is Finance Administration and Policy Committee. And I've asked that Councilor Rumbold, please present the report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I am currently having difficulty loading the reports, so just bear with me. So, the Finance, Admin, and Policy Committee met as a part of the Committee of the Whole on, yeah, I don't even have that, my apologies. Now, if you want to, if somebody else is able to load it, I can't get it to load here now. So, let me just see.
Is there anybody else?
What was the date that it was sent to us? I'll search by date. Okay, wait, no, I do have it up. I think I've got it. When did you send us the minutes, Kathy? I don't have it.
It's dated the 14th of October in the-
So it was sent to the new, and that's why. I've still got the old one. Committee of the Whole. We don't have them.
No, no, no. The agenda is basically-
Okay, so you don't want to go over what we discussed the last time?
No.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay, so for the Finance, Admin, and Policy Committee, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven new business items. Our first item that we need to discuss this evening is voting delegates from municipalities Newfoundland and Labrador for their upcoming AGM. As per policy, the Council must vote on who will be our voting delegates at municipalities Newfoundland and Labrador. At this time, we have three Council members that will be attending. And so, I don't know if we vote, we don't vote tonight on that, do we? Do we make the decision but not vote?
No, we don't vote tonight, just basically put forward a recommendation for next week.
So, Councilor Williams, Councilor Dyson, and Mayor Pomeroy will be attending. And I guess we ask if anybody's interested in being a voting delegate, or who would-
So we get two, two voting delegates?
Two voting delegates.
Yes. So, I mean, you as Mayor should be one.
Sure. So we'll just have to confirm at the public meeting, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, good.
They could probably decide between the three of them who's gonna vote, right?
But we'll have to know because we need to vote.
Naming the two voting members, which is why we figure tonight, like, who's the least, so we can do the motion for next time.
I don't think Councilor Dyson, where she's familiar with her, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter to me, I think, I think you're right, Deputy Mayor, because Councilor Dyson has done it before. I'm okay with that.
So we're good for that? We'll have a motion for council meeting?
Yep.
Next one, counselor?
Our next item of business is to rescind policy A0044 Youth Representative. So we're not again voting to rescind tonight, but to discuss the rescinding rationale of this policy. So in 2017, a policy was approved by the 11th Council of the Town of Happy Valley Goose Bay. And basically, what this policy states is that there would be a youth representative that would advise Council on issues relating to youth in our community. Unfortunately, at this time, what has happened is there isn't a, a poli- is it a policy? I'm looking at the CAO. There isn't a provision in the towns, that's the right word. There isn't a provision in the Townsend Local Service District Act that actually allows for a youth representative, which in turn makes this policy redundant. So unless anybody thinks that there's possibly another solution, workaround, or alternative, I think we really have no choice at this point but to entertain that at our next public meeting. Okay, all good. Third item is uncollectible accounts receivable policy. So, at this point in time, we're looking to establish a consistent, transparent, and auditable process for the write-off of aged or uncollectible receivable accounts. So this has been something that there have been numerous uncollectible accounts historically, and there hasn't been a formalized policy in place at this time. So what this has happened, done is this has resulted in inconsistent treatment of the aged receivables, and not clear documentation as far as what we follow. So during the 2024-2025 financial audit process and the discussions with our auditor, it was recommended that we have a clear policy implemented, and that would guide our efforts on approvals and write-offs. So the policy has been developed in consultation with our CAO and our finance department, and they've taken into consideration the Townsend Local Service District Act requirements in order to draft the policy. So what they have done is they've come up with a policy, and all of Council has been provided a copy of the policy to review. So if anybody has any comments, or questions, or concerns, before we bring that forward to our public meeting, I guess now would be the time to discuss.
Any comments?
Questions, concerns?
I'll just add, with that, I mean, and the CAO can certainly elaborate, but we've had a number of incidents in the past where people have passed away, moved away, can't find where they live no more. So that's the reason for tightening things up, is that correct?
And just the consistency, I would say, yeah, okay. Sounds good. So our next one is a property tax exemption request that we have received. So as everybody is familiar with, we have a not-for-profit policy F0009 whereby not-for-profit organizations are able to request a tax exemption. So in this case, it is the Labrador Friendship Center that has requested their exemption. They have provided all the documentation that was required. Their net income does fall within the 100% relief category. And so, based on this exemption, if we approve the 100% tax relief for three separate categories, it would be for the property tax for 2026 for a certain parcel ID, it would be business tax for 2026 for another parcel ID, and business tax for 2026 for a third parcel ID. We're looking at roughly, I'm gonna say $15,000. And, but this is why this policy F009 was created. It was created to alleviate hardship on businesses, or not businesses, but not-for-profits in our, in our area. And I, in addition to the information that we've been provided, I would have to say, you know, I really, I really think and really appreciate that this has been done by the Labrador Friendship Center because we've said consistently, we need data, we need applications to know. We developed a brand-new policy, and we can't say if it's working or it's not working until people actually follow through with the application process. So I think if I look at the CAO, this is only our second application under this policy. The first one's received a 25% reduction, and this one is 100%. So we encouraged all of the not-for-profits to get these applications in. So I think, you know, if everybody's reviewed their council package, it is definitely well within the guidelines as they were set out.
I'll make a comment on that. While they might have got a 25% discount, the one that you're referring to, they received 100% discount for years and years and years. So how did that benefit them with this new not-for-profit policy? It did not benefit them. It did not benefit them. And it was the Libra House.
Yeah, so we're not gonna debate it here, I mean, we can do it in a public meeting, but we'll have further discussion on this. And the policy itself was new, so, and we agreed at the time that we would try to work our way through it and, and judge it accordingly over time to see what's working, and if we need to make adjustments, then we'll make adjustments accordingly. Anybody else got a comment?
Just a note that it's referencing the Labrador Friendship Centre as well as the Little Tree Family Centre, so those are two separate, separate buildings.
I'm just wondering how not-for-profit that incurs profitable directions. So the Little Tree makes, creates revenue, and so does the Labrador Friendship Centre.
Little Tree don't create revenue.
They have no benefits? There's no money involved with it?
Yeah, yeah. No, what you're looking at is the, the...
The 100% exemption.
What comes out at the end. So they have to show that their expenses exceed their revenue.
Right.
And this is what this case is.
Yeah, and this is one of the things that I was looking at, was like, they have salaries based on the Friendship Centre, so they, they, they create revenue grants, whatnot, and so forth. Basically, they come to zero.
But they need the criteria for this one, so...
Yeah, so criteria is like whether their program funding, whether it's federally or provincially funded.
Understandable, understandable. But I mean, I'm just looking at all the monies that's coming in compared to 15 or the tax amounts that's coming out, regardless of the town, looking for taxes based on the properties they acquire or utilize. Doesn't make sense every time.
Yeah, I think this is, this is why with the policy F0009, it was, it may seem rather in-depth, but what it is, is because there are government grants, and there's funding, and there's revenue, and there's expenses, and so, you know, it resulted in them having to submit a significant document, but through that document, you are able to clearly see. They were able to clearly demonstrate that their financial obligations outweighed their intake, so, um, yeah.
Very councillor Winters?
Yeah, I'm just not confused, a little confused is if they meet the criteria for 100% exemption, why does it come in the council?
Because only council can determine whether or not to grant an exemption or not.
Okay, so we still have to vote on it, even though, even though we have the policy in place to say that they have, they follow the criteria, they meet the guidelines, and they, they check off all their boxes, it still has to come for us for a vote?
Yeah, unless council delegates that responsibility to staff.
Yes, and we haven't done that.
Okay, okay.
Now, that's only for this type of, that's not for personal, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Councillor Rumbold, next one please.
Okay, our next item is a donation request, or sponsorship request is my wording. So the town has been approached by a coach on behalf of Millie Mountain Collegiate for a donation to their female soccer team. What we need to consider in this case is policy F0020, because as of right now, we do not have a policy for student travel, and that policy was rescinded or abolished, and what we do have is a blanket request for donations of not-for-profit and charitable organizations. So what we need to determine here at council level is if this is, or should be considered a not-for-profit charitable organization, and if it fits the policy F0020. In our briefing note, as you'll all note, it has been determined by the research that our staff has done that this does not fit the, the not-for, or the donation policy as such. But yeah, obviously, discussion warranted. If anybody would like to provide any input on to whether or not this, they feel that this fits F0020, but right now, the recommendation in our briefing note is that it does not fit, and that we would not proceed.
Okay.
So, CAO, when did we receive that letter? Because that travel was this weekend pass, 16 to the 19?
There's no date on their letter that I can see.
So you don't recall when it came in, or how it came in, or whatever?
Well, that was a, the note, the briefing note was drafted on the 2nd of October, so it obviously had to have been before that.
I don't see a date. Luckily, it came through an email, because there's no date on the actual letter.
Right.
So is this something that was done in the past? Uh, or, it doesn't really follow policy as such, but again, it was, it is council discretion. We'll have to have a discussion at the public meeting and debate it there, and then go to a vote, so...
And you're not looking for an amount in that letter either. So we have done this in the past, youth travel, but yeah, it's council discretion, so...
Basically, there should be a policy for that?
There is a policy, yeah, your F0020.
That is the policy, yeah.
Sorry, that's the donation, uh, policy. What they've asked for is a corporate sponsorship, and the town rescinded the youth travel assistance policy a number of years ago.
So if we give a donation, it could come from our donations policy, but we'd have to have that...
If they had to word it any other way but travel?
Well, you have to tell the purpose. You can't just ask for money. You have to say the purpose.
No, but I mean, they could say it for, they could say it for their soccer team, I guess.
But we could donate to them, councillor Royaldale. We could make a donation to them, if the council decided on going that.
Okay, so the next one, please.
Okay, the next one is the RCMP Friends of the Force Charity Ball Donation Request. So our town has been approached by a constable on behalf of the Royal Canadian Mounted Police for a donation to their Friends of the Force Charity Ball. All monies raised through their silent auctions at their ball will be donated to local charities. I would imagine, the wording in that is kind of vague. I would imagine all monies raised, period, through their ball would be donated to local charities. This year's charity is Meals on Wheels. So previous donations from the town have been made to this particular charity, and they are not requesting a specific monetary value. So what we're discussing is whether or not this falls in line with F0020, if anybody has any feedback. And our recommendation on our briefing note is to approve a $500 donation, which has kind of been the precedent for the last two years as well, to their charity ball in order to purchase a prize for their silent auction. So what they would do is they'd take that money, they'd purchase a prize, and then the revenue from the silent auction would go to the Meals on Wheels program.
And are there, there are other options we can look at as well, right?
So we, we can discuss here the other options. Previous, to the previous council, they, they always bought a table and gave the option of councillors, the mayor, or whatever, staff managers to attend that event. What concerns me with this one, again, I don't know when it came in, that ball is Saturday night, the 25th. So if our meeting's not till the 28th, and just tickets for sale, you know, tables, there might be seats available now, and we're not gonna vote on that till next Tuesday?
Yeah, yeah. And we can't, we can't make a decision before Tuesday.
Well, we could have a special meeting.
We could, for one item, but...
Are we able to see when that correspondence was received, CAO?
I don't see a date on that one either.
And it only makes sense to say, like, you want the town here to represent the town of Happy Valley Goose Bay at these events. So if you're, you know, if you're buying a table...
So it's amount for, CAO's amount for $500. So it's $500 and above that we have to have a motion for?
To approve checks, yes.
So that... If you purchase six seats, it's $450.
So we purchased $499, then we don't have to go to a public meeting for that?
That would be six, six seats.
Well, it's still a donation request, right? So it's still kind of the council's donation.
But you don't need to vote on it, right?
We don't need a motion for that.
You don't need a motion to approve the check.
And that would be six seats.
That'd be $450.
And that's what they are, $5?
Well, $75.
$75.
$75 for five seats.
Six seats.
Six seats, $475.
So that's three couples or six individuals, or however, whichever you wanna look at it.
Yeah, so if we are able to do that, whether it would happen to go to a public vote, can that be, can you relay that to them tomorrow? Is that possible? With less than $500?
So you're, you would like to donate how much?
Well, they could purchase six seats, I guess, is best consensus.
Six at $75 would be $450.
Yeah.
And I, and, and just from, from the past, I was at the RCMP ball, several of them too, and one was the town had purchased a table and the seats weren't filled. But if we look at $450, then we would fill six seats, and then it would be the organizers that would...
And I guess after the fact, if you can probably, if we needed to, if there was more than, added a table, they would find somebody to sit.
They, yeah, they're not filling a table with just the town, they're filling a table with eight seats. Right?
Would it be cleaner just to give a donation to Meals on Wheels on behalf of the town?
No.
No, because we weren't approached by Meals on Wheels, we were approached by the RCMP.
Yeah, and that way you'd have representation at the event, which we're gonna get a few of these through the year, so...
I think it's good for, for councillors to be seen at these events, especially when they're supporting all of these local charities. I mean, we all know where their money is going to, and in this case, it's Meals on Wheels, but every year, it's going to something that benefits this community. So if you're sitting at a table, or you're networking, or if you're chatting with whoever happens to be at the other two seats, then you're still representing council. That's my opinion.
So just to, just to be sure, CAO, were we able to move down that road, and just basically provide them with a donation of $450 on the, that we would fill six seats?
Yeah, so you want the seats and the, so you wanna purchase seats, not give a donation?
Yes.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, use the donation.
And I mean, if nobody takes up the seats, then obviously they'll still get the donation.
Okay, but if you're looking to purchase seats, we'll need to be able to give, we'll need to tell them what, who's going.
Well, we'll have to figure that out before the end of this week.
Figure it out by Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
Wednesday.
If people can...
Do they need to know exactly who's going? They just need to know six people are arriving?
They've asked before. Yeah, they wanna know who's, who's gonna be there with, for the town, who's... Sometimes councillors have taken spouses, sometimes they haven't been able to fill the seats and tantrum this gun or staff, so we need to know sooner rather than later if it's happening on Saturday.
Okay, good, so we'll know by Wednesday for sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna be out of town, so can you just let Kathy know who's planning on going?
Yeah, just send an email off to Kathy, or whatever.
Yeah, so you should sell us for an equivalent.
All right, one more, in-kind donation report.
Okay.
Well, we're back to that one, we're back to that one, is that if the seats are not available, then we can take the other direction and say we'll vote on $500 to give to the RCMP.
Might be a good, yeah, might be a good idea for us to let you know tonight after this meeting, Kathy. Just in case, right?
Yeah.
Okay, final item for Finance, Admin, and Policy is the in-kind donation report, and this is as of September 30th of 20... No. It says in-kind donation report last season, and it's as of September 30th of 2024. Are we gone back to the last year, or can somebody tell me from staff how to interpret this? And I'm sorry, I didn't pick up on this earlier. I didn't realize I was doing the finance report.
Or is it just supposed to say 2025?
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll go on the assumption that this is correct, and if it's not correct, by the time we get to the next meeting, I'll just update and say, I'm sorry?
Would Dom know?
No, it's not just CSR related, it is...
Director of CSR, please?
Is all CSR? The breastfeeding, and the med, and... Oh, okay. No, no, we're just trying to clarify the date. 2025, okay. Okay. Okay, so our in-kind donations to date from October 1st of 2024 to September 30th of 2025. So that's not our fiscal year, is that, CAO? Am I the only one who's, I don't think I'm the only one who's confused?
So, the report that you were looking at there...
Yeah, the in-kind donations.
Yeah, that's not the finance donations report.
Okay.
So the finance donations report, there is a balance of $15,200 out of $22,500 remaining for the year.
Okay. So that doesn't need to be a part of the finance report. Okay, then that solves that issue.
There's mud.
Okay, thank you councillor. Now we have planning, community planning and development.
Which is me as well.
It's you as well, so...
Okay, so for community planning and development, tonight we have three items for discretionary land use, and four crown land, sorry, applications, as well as a couple of policy reviews. So I'll start with the discretionary land use, and, okay, so we have an application for discretionary land use for plex housing at 53 Cartwright Road. The property is zoned residential varied density, and as per section 3.2.3 of our development regulation, plex housing falls in discretionary use in this zone. So the applicant is looking to construct a fourplex. There is a mix of single detached dwellings and semi-detached dwellings duplexes in this area. Other residential varied density zones do have plex buildings. So what we have done is we put it out on our website for comments, questions, concerns, from September 10th to the 17th, for the full seven days as required by our development regulations. We received three responses expressing concern with the proposed discretionary land use, including a petition signed by 60 individuals who reside in the area. So you will have seen this in your package. So the petition was dated for September the 10th, the email was dated for September the 16th, so there was a six-day, just a lapse. So taking all those key considerations into effect, the description of discretionary land use, the land uses, the discretionary uses listed in the zone use table may be permitted at the discretion of council, but council must be satisfied that the development would not be contrary to the general intent and purpose of the regulations. So council was required to provide public notice, which we did, and if we were to provide approval, that discretionary use would require compliance with our development regulations, with federal and provincial regulations, firelife safety, and whatnot. So at this time, based on the feedback that was received from the community, staff has brought forward a recommendation to council that we deny the discretionary land use application, and while the application does comply with all regulations and requirements, we must take the opinions of the citizens living in the area into consideration. So of course, we're not debating this motion today, but if anybody has any additional questions, clarity pieces?
I, I do. I just wonder, when it comes to something like this, are we able to go back with conditions to the person who put the, the land use application in? Because I was just thinking about, like, I had a look at it, but I don't really understand the specs so much. But I mean, if it's a front face looking like a duplex, can we go back with questions, I guess?
Well, it, it is discretionary decision of council, and a lot of times, you take your discretion based on the feedback you get through a consultation, which is public advertising or, you know, and people respond to that, and then we make our decision based on the reaction that we get from the public. So right now, the motion is to deny, but it is a decision of council, and we'll make that decision, I guess, next week for sure.
Yeah, so where do we, where do we have the opportunities and to discuss like these topics?
Right, so there's no motion in front of you right now.
No, absolutely.
There's just a recommendation. So once it becomes a motion...
Then we could discuss.
Then we can discuss it. But, so... But, so right now, it's more about, if you were to have questions about, okay, what is plex housing? Why does, what makes this unique? Why is, I think, which is what councillor Williams is.
I don't know if we're going in the right direction with these committee holes, because we always had discussions. We never voted, but we had discussions.
Oh, but you have a discussion.
So I don't know why we're saying no discussion.
We can have a discussion, but we can't vote.
We can't debate.
Okay, well.
So any questions you got, uh, councillor O'Dell, you can ask.
Okay, well, I guess one point is that if there's multiple houses or plexes or whatever you wanna call them on that street, and multiple streets within this community, because obviously it doesn't seem that we ever sit down and said, these are for low, low density use, because every low-density street has apartments in them anyhow. So in this situation, what makes this different than the, fifty-three, so that's the further end, what makes this different than the four apartment buildings on the end of the street?
Because sometimes they're built without permission from, from the town or without the proper.
Some of those apartments may have been there for years.
No, these are brand-new apartments.
They go non-conforming.
Well, these are two brand-new apartments put on the end of Cartwright Crescent. Now, there's one there that's old and, and kinda.
And it comes down to that, you know, consultation piece too, right?
Yeah, it is, it is possible that that went out for public, the same thing, on seven days advertised, and it is possible that there was no objection received at all. So.
And in this case. Council needs to, you know, steadfast in their decision-making, based on, if we're allowing this, uh, two houses down, but not allowing out two houses all, then it's either we put policies in place to say, listen, if you're gonna build something, it has to meet whatever standards we want, whether the face of the house has to look a certain way, or the property has to look a certain way, or whatever the case should be. But if we're going, we can't just base it on where it's located to on a street. The street is the street, so basically it's gonna be yes or no, and these are the, these are the discretion that we put in place to say.
It's either permitted, or it's not, or council has a discretionary power to, to permit.
Yeah, because I mean, there's apartments in this community that.
CIO?
I, I'd just like to explain something, because I understand you're new to councils, so you may not understand this, but the, the purpose of discretionary, uh, permitted uses within the development regulations is that it comes to council for determination as to whether or not it's permitted at the time.
Right.
So if you have, I'll say stricter guidelines in place, then it wouldn't come to council. So if this was a single-family dwelling.
Yeah.
Council wouldn't even know about it.
Right, right.
You know, our staff would issue the permit, but whenever it's discretionary, it has to come to council for debate, so that you can discuss the things that, I'll say, contribute to whether or not it's permissible or not, so that the residents in the area could have a say into whether or not it goes up in their neighborhood or near the work, something else. It's the whole intent of the discretionary.
But it seems like, from what I've read, is that we have a lot of discretionary.
Depends on the zoning and, and the use.
On the zoning, that's what I mean.
And that's what it boils down to, it's the zoning.
The zoning and the use, right?
It's not zoned for that, so this is, this is why the application is coming.
Comes to the council.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Now, I understand that part, I'm just wondering that.
Yeah, and, and in saying all that, um, when it comes to discretionary, and then this is why it goes public, is, and then we come back, and now, like you said, there's, it's, there's already one at the end of the street, why can't there be one in the middle? Because the one in the middle has sixty signatures saying that they don't want, the people that immediately around don't want it there. And they, and, and say, this is where it goes back.
Because it's not zoned for that.
Yeah, I know, but either it was the other two, either it was, you know, this is why, this is why it's, I struggle with it, because I mean. Yeah, what I'm saying is, there was no one, no one against that, that other, that other development.
Yeah. So it's basically, council's brought forward, there's no objection from the, from the community regarding that.
But it meant, it meant protocols.
No.
Those other ones, it may or may not have, and I, I mean, I know they've been there for a few years now, and at the time, it may have, if it was discretionary, it came to council, the time council may have said yes to it.
But didn't this one meet?
No.
No.
This one did not meet?
Well, I said it, you gotta vote. Modest a vote, modest a vote, it met.
It meets the building regulation requirements, but it is in a discretionary use zone, which means it has to come to council.
Yes, I understand that part.
Yeah.
The question I have though is about, if the applicant, if we were to go back to the applicant and we say, you know, it doesn't, we as a council aren't happy with, with exactly what they have there, but could we, could we go back to the applicant and have a conversation about what we want it to look like? Like, like what I think about, when I think about apartment buildings, I think about, where are people gonna park? How many parking, like is it going to be a parking lot in the front? Will there be parking in the back? Will it look like a duplex from the front?
That's, that's all outlined in the regulations.
That's all in the regulations.
And that's all in the application.
And that's all in.
And it's quite possible that the, the applicant, if this is not approved as discretionary, the applicant may choose to build a duplex. No, may choose to, because it's only plex housing, so anything with three and four units has to come discretion of council. But this person could absolutely build a duplex with absolutely no need for it to come for discretion. So, you know, they may just rejig their plans and, right?
Okay. Yeah, and the other thing is, is when you look at what the public came back with, because one of the things was, it's gonna be an increase in traffic, when you look at a forty-three unit street, I did a bit of math, it's a five percent increase in traffic, so it's really nominal, right? So I wonder, do we review the complaint as it comes and ensure that it's not vexatious or frivolous?
Again, it goes down to the development regulations, and there are stipulations on parking spaces and.
I guess the other question is, if you haven't went back and said, well, what would, what would any, what would the residents want to see there? Is it single dwelling? Because I mean, basically, we're determining what someone puts there based on, and I understand, I mean, I'd be in the same situation, I would want to see something that's appropriate for my street, if something was to go on my street. And if the contractor or whoever decides to put something there, I think, and I think the residents of that street should have the opportunity to review it and say, yeah, okay, that fits the mold of what's here, or does not fit the mold of what's here. But at the end of the day, it's, if we're gonna say, we only want single dwellings, well, then just make it single dwellings, change, change what it is, and say, this is no longer a, whatever, this is gonna be a single-dwelling low-density road.
Then you change your zoning.
Yeah, change the zoning.
So that's not something that's motion to council?
No, okay, just, again, bow enough.
Okay.
Okay.
But keep that in mind.
I would imagine that this will still come forward to council, it's just.
Yeah, we're not deciding on the outcome tonight.
Okay. And, you know, I lost my page now because... Okay. Where was I? Back to the beginning.
So home-based business twelve Deefen Baker.
Twelve Deefen Baker, let me flick my pages. Here we go. Okay, so, eh, we have a request for a home-based business at twelve Deefen Baker. This property is zoned residential varied density, as per section six, uh, six point three, sorry. The applicant is looking to operate a home-based business for the operation of a phone, internet, email-only home office. The applicant lives at the location, the business office will be operated in the main structure. All work will occur at the locations requiring these services, so off-site work. Um, a discretionary land use ad was placed on our website from September the twenty-ninth to October the sixth, the full seven days, and the town has not received any comments or concerns with regards to the application. So at this point, staff is recommending that council approve the home-based business for clearview disposal services, and I forgot to mention that, um, I think the scope of the building is for, it says contracting services, but I do believe that it's like a garbage removal, um, operation, and again, all done off-site. Any questions, concerns? Straightforward?
Straightforward, I think, yeah.
Okay.
So same thing, uh, forty-four Windsor.
Next one, home-based business at forty-four Windsor Drive. This one is zoned residential high-density, and the applicant is looking to operate a home-based office for the operation of a mobile hair-cutting service. The applicant lives at this location, the business office will be located in the main structure, but all work will occur at the locations requiring this service. So again, um, this is an off-site, uh, home-based business. So with the mobile hair-cutting service, what the applicant would do, would they would operate their phone fax office from their home, but they would come off-site to perform the work. The town put out an ad on our website for comments from October fifteenth to October twenty-second, so the full seven days has not yet passed, today is October the twentieth, but as of today, the town has not received any comments or concerns, and we will receive an update, council will receive an update from staff if any are received. So at this point in time, staff recommends that council approve the home-based business, because it will be for the operation of a phone, internet, email-only, um, office at home. Questions, concerns?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Next one is a Crown Lands application. So we have Crown Lands application three six two four one, and it's a Crown Land application for changing a lease into a grant. The property is currently zoned commercial. Convenience stores, strip malls, service stations are all permitted uses in that commercial zone. It's a frontage of sixty meters and a depth of eighty meters, and, um, staff is recommending that council provide no objection to the application, again, just for the change of a lease into a grant, on the condition that future development complies with our development regulations. Questions, concerns?
Any questions?
Okay. Next one, Crown Lands application seven three nine one two, and again, for the changing of a lease into a grant. The property is zoned commercial.
Councillor Rambo?
Sorry.
Am I, I, I may be in a conflict in this one? Is that the right one? I don't know.
I will tell you, the name of the company is Markland Realty.
Which one?
Markland Realty.
I don't see the names, only see the numbers, so let me know before it gets to that point.
Markland, so it's, it's a GM dealership. Don't think, I think you're good.
Yeah.
Okay, so this, um, property is zoned commercial, and automotive sales and service is permitted in the commercial zone. It's approximately seventy meters frontage by depth of a hundred meters. And again, staff recommends that council provide no objection to the Crown Lands application to change from a lease to a grant. Questions, concerns?
Good.
All good? Okay, another one is one that we will hold for deputy mayor to declare a conflict, if she wishes to do so, please.
Yes, I am clearly in a conflict in this one.
Okay, so deputy mayor will sit up in the gallery and listen in, but she can't engage in discussion. So, councillor?
Okay. This one is a Crown Lands application one three one eight three two. The applicant is deputy mayor Jackie Compton-Hobbs, and it's for Crown Land application for conversion from a lease to a grant. The property is presently zoned resource, and cottage is permitted in the resource zone, so staff has recommended that council provide no objection, um, to the changing from a lease to a grant for the purpose of a cottage. All good?
Good, good.
Okay. Stretch your legs there, deputy mayor, and.
Thank you.
Okay, my final Crown Lands application item is Crown Lands application one six four one seven nine, and this is a Crown Land application for a lease for agricultural use. Trees and stumps will be removed, leaving all nutrients, some timothy grass, peas and oats are to be planted. The property is zoned agricultural, and commercial agricultural is permitted in the zones. It's approximate frontage of a hundred and seventy meters and depth of five hundred and thirty meters. Council previously voted no on this in June, as it crossed into the open space parks and trails zone, but staff have been in communication with Crown Lands and applicants to revise this area. So since this last came to council, they have reduced the area of the application, and it now falls wholly within the agricultural zone. So, staff recommends that council provide no objection to the Crown Lands application at twenty-eight Grand Lake Road, um, which is zoned agricultural, on the condition that future development complies with the town's development regulations. Questions, concerns, comments? All good?
Yep, all good.
Okay. I only have two more items. I have the public transit etiquette policy draft. So I'm just gonna mention it here briefly, because you've all had time to review it in your council package. But I will hit on the key considerations. So the draft is in three sections, namely respect, safety and efficiency, hygiene and comfort. Each section has been drafted based on research and samples of best practices in Canada, and the draft has also been worded in the simplest language for ease of reading and clarity. So we have a draft policy for, um, public transit etiquette, and it's just something that's needed, um, for us in operating our town public transit system, so that clear expectations are out there for all users as to what is acceptable and what is not acceptable on our public transit system. Anybody have any questions or concerns after reading the briefing note?
The only note I'd like to mention is, or I'd like to see on it, is maybe an enforcement process, where if somebody is being inappropriate or goes against any of the, what's, what's on the policy, that there be a verbal, maybe a removal from the bus if need be, just to protect the, the drivers and the other passengers?
I'm just trying to pull it back up and see, um, 'cause I, I think it did mention, like, removal.
It did.
But I don't think it said, yeah, that you could be permanently, like, barred or whatnot from the bus, so.
Like an enforcement process, like a progressive action, verbal removal, suspension, and maybe a long-term ban, if necessary, but, I mean.
Well, the staff who worked on this policy are both here in chambers this evening, so I'm sure they will take your comments and feedback back, and, um, that's something that, yeah, I would, I would recommend that you send an email, asking that they, um.
No, I think that's a good point, councillor Williams.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, the CIO.
CIO, got a question?
Not a question, a comment. Just to be clear, the town is unable to put any enforcement provisions within, uh, a policy that would have to be under a bylaw? So while the policy can state that, you know, people will be asked to leave, but it could be banned or things like that, we can't put that in the policy, but we can't put in, you'll be fined or you will be charged.
Yeah, we can't put enforcement measures.
Anything like that under a policy. Have you discussed any of, any of this area at all with the policy? Like if someone is inappropriate, what the action might be, you can't enforce anything.
Call the RCMP.
Have you discussed like any? Beyond what's written in the policy, no.
So basically, we need to sit down and create a bylaw for the municipal enforcement, I guess, or would it be further than that?
Well, it would be municipal enforcement, but it depends, like if somebody attempts to get on the public transit bus that's intoxicated, we wouldn't call our MEO, we would call the RCMP.
Okay.
And they would deal with it under the criminal act.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So we gotta kind of stipulate between what occurs on the bus and who gets called.
Yeah, it comes down to whether we can enforce it.
Because it might be something that's not criminal, that, just a nuisance or whatever, right? Yes, if somebody's being disruptive, I mean, our drivers have the ability to ask them to leave, if the person is being more, a bit more aggressive or whatever, the, they can contact our MEO to deal with that under the Noise and Nuisance Act, if that's what they're doing.
Yes, yes.
I think we should put something in there though, something around the nuisance, the behaviors, not necessarily enforcement, but maybe another line that.
Yeah.
So we would, we would have to look at it under a bylaw, because, like, based on the research that was done, and I don't, Marv has done considerable bit more research on this, but when we were looking at this this summer, like all the policies that we were seeing across the country, like you don't have enforcement within your policy on your etiquette. There's an expectation, and a kind of a warning, just to say that, you know, here's, if you breach the etiquette policy, here's what could happen.
Right.
But the enforcement doesn't go into the policy.
I think that would be fine, or you had the warnings, if this is what could happen, then we can look at the bylaws.
Yeah, so that's in the.
As regards to actions after fact.
That's in the first pair.
Yes, and councillor O'Dell, in terms of bylaw development, you know, that takes a considerable amount of time, and that requires, uh, a lot of going back and forth with legal, potentially public consultations, so it's, it's something that's gonna happen quickly.
Oh, no, but I mean, I guess, if we identify that there's a need for it, then.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, just to make it consistent and clear, that was all I was thinking.
Yeah.
It looks great.
All right.
Okay.
We have one more.
My final item is the social media policy review, and, um, it is about updating policy A zero zero two eight, which is our social media policy. So this was approved in two thousand twelve. So this was approved in two thousand twelve, reviewed again in two thousand sixteen by the Tenth Council. And, um, it's now due for a review because it's been nine years. So many municipalities in the province have reviewed their policies to reflect the current state of the digital age. We know that this is changing very quickly. Um, so the town is active on different social media platforms, namely, Facebook, Instagram and LinkedIn. And interactions with our content have grown over time. Our various social media platforms, um, review their policies in terms of use regularly. And so, um, in line with that, it, you know, just falls on us to, to make sure that we stay current and, um, that we are following these things as well. So we were presented with a five-page drafted policy that we've all had the opportunity to review. The main considerations being that we review the structure of the policy, so it's in line with best practices. That we review the definitions to include terms like inappropriate use for employees, counselor and external users. Um, extension of the definition of social media to include new platforms, like Threads, Blueski, X. I'm one of those people who still thinks I'm on Twitter, but I'm actually on X. YouTube, Snapchat, um, podcasts, blogs and blogs. And, uh, review the employee responsible for managing the town's social media. At one point, we had a, um, public relations position, which we no longer have, um, that particular title within the town. Include a terms of use section for non-employees, so that they are clear about what to expect as they interact with platforms used by the town, I love that part. Um, social media policy has to be updated every two years. So our draft, um, can be reviewed against our best practices and further input provided. I guess this is our first read-through for council and our opportunity to provide our, um, feedback. And the old policy may, um, still be reconsidered and reviewed. Um, so the draft is to be reviewed and if we, you know, if, if everybody thinks that this new five-page draft, um, is a, a good version of the new policy, A zero, zero, two, eight, we can proceed to adopt and amend at a next meeting. So, questions, concerns, comments?
Nope, no comments?
I just, I'd like to say thank you very much to our staff who've taken the time to put this, um, updated policy together. Because of everything that we have in policies, the thing that changes the fastest and that we need to be the most cautious with is social media. So having something that, you know, spells, spells out all the clear expectations and guidelines is, is very important. And, um, yeah, I just, I appreciate the staff for taking the time to do this for us.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move into Protective Services and Counselor, Deputy Mayor Hobbs.
Yeah, so, uh, there's no recommendations under this, uh, committee this month. Um, but in the previous council, we discussed fireworks bylaw, which, uh, the Director of Protective Services is gonna present to the next meeting in November on where we're to with that. The community safety plan, uh, Brian Davis has been hired for, uh, nine months to, as a project manager who's developing a community plan with, uh, different groups in the community, uh, different organizations. So that's good news, I don't know if, you know, a lot of people know that out there, but there is a community safety plan being developed. Uh, through Brian Davis, who's been hired by the town, so that's good news. The Guarda Con, Security Contract is on now until the end of October, I'm looking at the CAO or the, or the end of November.
Extended to the end of November.
End of November, correct, yeah. Other than that, uh, I, I just wanted to ask a question, uh, I know we talked about it, um, a fire hall design. Can, uh, Mr. Dillon, can you give us a little update of where that might be too?
The discussions have been held with the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. And they were preparing some information and they're supposed to forward it to the town, once it's complete. And I've yet to receive it yet.
Do you have a timeline of when the design might be finished?
Well, the, we're waiting on the RFP, actually, the art, the information for the RFP to put out, to advertise the RFP, to have the design completed.
Uh, I'd just say that I'm not gonna speak for everybody, but I think we're all on the same page when it comes to a priority for this town council, it's definitely a new fire hall, so I'm just trying to figure out when we might, and you're not sure when the timeline might be?
Well, I had a meeting with them about three weeks ago, they said it should be, shouldn't be too long. Uh, but I've, I've still yet to receive it, so I'll, I'll check with them again and, and see what the status is.
Okay, um, and in your report, you'll see the RCMP report, and I'll, I'll just mention this. In, uh, September twenty twenty-five, we had six hundred and ninety-nine calls to the RCMP. In twenty twenty-four, we had seven hundred and forty-six. I think it's been a very long time, months and months and months, since we've seen a number less than it has been in previous months, so that's, that's good to see. And hopefully, it'll only keep dropping as we move forward. Um, I think that's it for Protective Services, there, there's no recommendations.
Deputy Mayor, if I can ask, um, so I know the previous council, we were working on that fireworks policy. Um, so there isn't a recommendation to come forward at the next meeting to adopt it. But I do think that, um, we still need more attention paid to it, more work on it. Um, I was very dismayed last night at the number of, the huge volume of fireworks. I did see two, um, permits issued on the town website, which was great. They were an MOT, I do not live in MOT, and there were fireworks in my neighborhood, frequent, lots and lots of loud fireworks. Uh, as, uh, and I mean, we've, we've discussed that there are many different reasons that people may, um, have sensitivities to fireworks. For me, it's as simple as having a pet that gets anxiety. If I have advanced notice, and I did, I saw those two permits, and I said, oh, great, it's way out of my neighborhood. I don't need to give my dog any meds, it's fine. And had I realized that in my neighborhood, there would be fireworks last night, I would have been able to be prepared. So there is, you know, when we talked, um, previously about perhaps having something put in the sale locations, we said we can't stop internet sales, but if the locations, the retailers in town have to have those papers passed out for permits or something, I just, I really think that we need to... When we're saying, these are the days that they're permitted and these are the days that they're not, and I know we've talked numerous times about how, how, if you are going to make a rule, it has to be enforceable, and how do you enforce this? And I do understand that, that it's very difficult to enforce. Um, I just think that there are a lot of people like me who were not prepared for the high volume. I knew it was Diwali and it didn't click that there would be a huge amount of fireworks in our community last night.
So I think for the fireworks policy, it needs to come back to the new council, and which is what the director's planning on doing for the next month. And we need to have a lengthy discussion on, cause we weren't, uh, there wasn't a consensus the last time. I'd like what the, uh, the Fire Chief, the Director had brought to the committee in the last council. So we need to bring that back to everyone, the new council, and discuss it again. Um, the other thing I just wanted to mention was the moving violations. Of course, we found out in the previous council that we no longer had that authority through our MEO. And we're still continuing to advocate to get the moving...
We're still moving through that file.
Yeah, so, just to put it out there. And that's it for me, Mayor.
So I just got one more thing on the fireworks issue. So with regards to the policy, uh, and the enforcement, that's two just separate entities, correct, CAO? That would have to be, policy has to be created, and if we, and a bylaw or...
Yeah.
So we've got a lot of bylaws, I guess we're gonna have to look at.
Yeah.
Yes.
Under the new act, we have to initiate bylaws.
So basically, it's like anything else, if there's no consequences to your actions, consequences will continue. So we're seeing policies, and we're trying to implement policies throughout this community to make it safer and, and, and better for residents. And there needs to be some actions created for those who are going against the bylaws, or going against the policies.
I'll ask the Director of Protective Services, if he, if it hasn't been sent out to all of council, can you forward the latest draft?
The latest draft, I can, uh...
You can speak to that?
I can forward the latest draft to you guys, um, the pieces that I were wait, that I was waiting on was the enforceable piece.
Yeah.
So if the MEO is able to enforce those aspects, that's the piece that we gotta put in place with legal. So that's why I'm waiting till November to bring that one back with a potential office. So he would only, he would be the only one that I'm aware of that can enforce that piece with a ticket. So, and Counselor Rumble, you are right, there were only two fireworks permits that were issued. But this is the first complaint that I'm hearing, so there was nothing submitted.
Because, yeah, in, in the point of a complaint, being on council and knowing that really, if I were to go on to Access E-one-one and today and say, hey, there were three sets of fireworks, can't tell you the exact address, because I stayed in my house on Pottle Street, but they were in the sky. I know that there were some let-off on Mitchell Street, like, I can tell you a street. But how would we, I, I guess, what would be achieved by me making that complaint was why I hesitated?
With that new bylaw, and that was one of the pieces that we discussed last month, was putting those applications to the vendors that are selling the fireworks. You know, will the onus be on them? No, it won't. PSA's work of the town to put those pieces out, but the first step is through them. So if somebody goes to whatever store that's selling a, a box of fireworks, here's this piece, you got forty-eight hours notice. I know somebody came to the fire hall today and, uh, they didn't realize they had to have forty-eight hours notice. Hopefully, that person won't set off fireworks tonight, but you never know. But if you guys do hear it, or you know of it, please put in the complaint.
And this is where our bylaw will come in play, once we get it put in place.
But after it comes to you guys in November, we make those recommendations or put whatever in it, then it'll go to legal.
Yeah.
So what would you see in a complaint, um, Mr. Butler, like, what, so if I, cause I still can, I can log into Access E-eleven, would it just be, you know, for logging purposes, that you could say in the area of, or in the general vicinity of Pottle Street, on October nineteenth, there were no less than three separate incidents of fireworks being set off?
It gives us data, but it doesn't give us the piece of the enforcement to go to...
Yeah, we don't have the authority right now.
This address, for the MEO to give a stern talking right now without a enforceable bylaw. You know, if we don't have that address, I can't say we're going to find that person.
Yeah, and for the purpose of the, of the public, I think, you know, there are those that are, you know, for and against, um, the management of fireworks. Whether I would like to see fireworks only done in our community twice a year or not, like, that's, that's a personal opinion. But the way it stands right now, with the actual public notice process, what people are failing to realize is if they had come in and got that permit, they're allowing people who have autistic children, anxious pets, infants, to be prepared for the expectation of fireworks. And I think that we need to, you know, we need to take all these things into consideration, that, um, you know, as a member of the general public, it's nice to have forewarning, at the minimum.
Yeah, and Mayor, the, uh, the bylaws that sits now, that can be sent to council, it's not done, it's not fully done yet.
No, that's fine, yeah.
What's drafted so far can be sent.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you can send it, then we can review it and bring our concerns to the next November meeting.
Yeah.
And Brad, we're still waiting on, on information on scooters, right?
On what?
Electric scooters.
That one we've already talked about, and where it's not enforced provincially.
We can't do it.
We, we're not touching it, we can't touch it, there's no enforceable power with that item.
There's no regulation, there's nothing in place.
There's no regulation provincially, that means even as a municipal, we can't get...
Correct.
No?
The most we could do with that is provide public education, which is the summer.
Yeah, and that, and that happened with, uh, with us and MEO pool and the RCMP. There was a PSA went out, but that's all they, that's all they can do as well. They can't enforce somebody to wear a helmet on an electric scooter, but they can't. But they can enforce somebody to wear a helmet on an electric bike. That's, that's the difference in this.
So, uh, Mayor, I think that's it for the Protective Services.
So we got Municipal Services now, you're doing that, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, um, there's no recommendations on our Municipal Services. Um, but if we could just get a couple of updates, uh, the, uh, and I'll look at you, Mr. Dillon, um, for the Charger, for the bus, uh, and Lowering Drive, if we can get a update on them too?
The Charger had to, uh, the tender came in high above the available funding. So we're in the process of, uh, changing the scope of the project, de-scoping some of the work. And it'll go to Tender within the next day or two.
It'll go to Tender when?
Within the next day or two.
Okay, and how long is it normally out for?
I'm also checking the, the electrical configuration too, at the request of Counselor Odell. And hopefully, I'll have an answer on that tomorrow also.
Right, and, uh, do you have an update on the paving for the bike trail? I know that it's up in the air, your spreader's broke, but...
The last I heard from the inspector with Al North was that next weekend, the, uh, the weekend coming up, or next Monday, I should say, uh, they should start again. That was the, that was the plan, uh, on Friday, it was a start in, in a week's time. Now, like you say, that may have changed depending upon the contractor, he has other priorities, and he has the, uh, the road to get done. He has issues with the asphalt quality, and he has issues with the spreader and so on, so hopefully, uh, you know, he follows through and, and we do get that started on Monday.
And we're, and we're hoping to get Kinson Park Trail included in that, right?
Yes, I'm still waiting on the, for a quotation to come back from the contractor. I've asked him, uh, a, a number of times, and he's working on it. And I guess he's going back to his sub, which is the, the paving contractor. And when he hears from him, I guess, depending on, on his...
Cause time is of the essence now.
Yes, for sure, and I think he realizes that too, which is why he, he has other work to do. And, and I'd say he's probably delaying on the providing a quote because he can't guarantee, maybe, I, I'm not sure. Uh, I've mentioned it to the paving contractor myself, and, and I, I say it's a matter of time, if you got the time to do it, hopefully, he'll get it done.
Yeah, I hope so too. Um, the other thing was Lowering Drive, you had mentioned you'd like to get the corner done there, any update on that?
The Black and Mac, which is the contractor for the signals, they've been, uh, they're in transit, the signals are in transit. So hopefully, in a few days, they'll be here, and next week, they'll be installed. We're also, I know that corner coming from Lowering onto Hamilton, it's a bit rough and rotted. We're also in the process of, uh, getting a catch basin and correcting the drainage issue there, because I know when it rains, it pans and it's, and it would be very, uh, uh, it wouldn't be suitable for people there waiting on that corner to try to get across. So we're gonna fix that drainage problem before we get it. And the intent is to pave that corner too. Once we get that dr, catch basin in, uh, the intention is to cut out the, the bad asphalt.
So it's not gonna be paved this year, that is what you're saying?
Well, the intent is to get that, to get that corner paved this year.
Okay, good.
We're in the process now of getting our road cuts done, we don't have them all done.
Right.
But as soon as we get that catch basin in, uh, before the contractor leaves, that's another priority project that we, that we hope to get also completed.
Right, okay, that's it for me, Mayor, on that one.
Deputy Mayor, uh, CAO, comments?
Municipal Services, I just got a text message from our superintendent to, that the Remember State Crosswalks will begin tomorrow. One is gonna be on Palisirs next to After Road, and one is gonna be at the entrance to the Legion parking lot.
Good, that's great news. I, I thought of asking that earlier, but I wasn't sure if they had got the stents left.
Yeah.
So that's good, great.
Fantastic. Thanks to Mr. Kay.
Thank you, uh, okay, last committee, uh, Minis, or, sorry, Community Services and Recreation, Counselor Winters, please.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I'm not gonna go through the manager's report, which are usually done, that can be done at the meeting. So we'll just, uh, if we can ask the CSR Director to come down and have some discussion about the new business. Uh, you can come down here if you want.
Sit up there, or there, you'll be more comfortable.
Uh, it's just, uh, it, it'd be better if you were here to discuss it because I think this arena advertising donation thing is, is, is better to come from you and not me and, you know what I mean? Because like we are talking, like, going through, going through your, um, your document here, basically you're looking at, uh, we're gonna be losing out on over ten thousand dollars a year for advertising just for, uh, local, uh, sports. Right? Because like, I know that we, the, the main one is the jiggy 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 sign, which takes up six Ford, which is thirty-six hundred dollars a year.
That's correct.
Right? And then, then they got another one, and then they got Spies on the Ice, and then there's the other two. Figure skating is worth fifteen hundred dollars a, a year. Minor soccer is eighteen hundred dollars a year. Six, uh, MAD is another six hundred, and breastfeeding and LG is another six hundred. And then I think, are you throwing on top the motherfuckers and the, uh, recac league on top of that as well?
Should I leave for this because I'm the captain of the motherfuckers?
We're not making any decisions.
Okay.
No decision, and you're not making any money.
Yeah, I think I wanted to give a bit of background, like, I think the user group app sign, which is great for the presence, like, we see them in our arena, other community come and they see them, uh, that's bring a lot. Um, but as you see, I don't have my, the computer's not opening, you know, my briefing note. But as you see, like, they certain group have a lot more than others.
Yeah.
And so like, it's kind of a bit unclear. And then in the discussion last year I had with minor hockey, it was like, can you give me a bit of background with the jiggy jiggy, uh, goose goose sign, uh, which is used by more than one sport now, like, if I keep coming to a town model. But I didn't have any more board to sell, like.
No, exactly.
The mandate from council to try to sell advertising to offset a little bit the, the cost. And we always keep the ice, or council keep the ice rental extremely low and, and, and floor as well. So it's like, well, you're having a lot of signs, so do you wanna remove it, or we'd like to pay for it? They said they would like to keep it, and then they approached council to have it as a donation as well. So when we started, I started looking a bit more and evaluating the different sign that's there, like, you have a total value, uh, that's being kind, in kind donated to the organization through the year. Uh, can give like, for example, MAD probably approached the town, paid for a couple of years, the sign was never removed. The breastfeeding was a bit the same thing. LG Health at the time, I've been with money for a project, breastfeeding's extremely poor and the sign didn't go. So it's kind of staying there.
So Dominic, there's no recommendation, is just trying to figure out what...
No, yeah, I think what, 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 what we're doing here is we're discussing what's going on here so that a policy can be drafted around making this a little bit more even. Because what I see is what you got outlined here is minor hockey has sixty-three hundred dollars worth and figure skating has nineteen hundred dollars worth, or whatever, uh, the number is.
And skating, yeah.
Yeah, and eighteen hundred. And, uh, and let's say, uh, minor soccer has eighteen hundred, so where's the, where's the parity, right? Like, I mean, why should minor hockey get more space than figure skating, or figure skating getting more than minor soccer, sort of thing, right?
Yes.
And this is all free from the town, basically, because it's in kind.
Yes.
So we needed policy drafted around, okay, how do we even it up and do we give them this much money? Because basically, that's what we're doing, is we're giving them in kind support of, like I say, this is, the total is over ten thousand dollars annually that we're losing.
And one thing, I'm not sure if I noted, that's important to know, like, none of those sign right now have like business advertised.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And, and, and from what I can understand, when, when we first started putting signs on, it was strictly for business advertising.
Dominic, you mind moving over there so I can't hear you and I can't see you? Over in that chair, I think everybody can see you over there.
What if I move just a little bit?
Or just pull the mic towards you.
Yeah, bring the mic.
That's better, that's better, yeah, and your mic. Perfect.
Um, I wasn't here when, when I came in two thousand and fifteen, there was advertising on the arena board. Uh, at the time, we didn't have many, but they had grow. And so now I'm at a point that I may be able to squeeze one more, two more, uh, but I don't have more. Like, the most popular sign advertising is on the board, and now I don't have more.
And do you have, have many requests for advertising space?
Uh, not, well, I had always a, a, a few, but I haven't necessarily seek out or approached any business in the past since I came back.
Yeah, you can't approach anyone who there's no space.
So Dominic, this is, uh, we, this is facing this because, uh, minor hockey is requested in kind for jiggy jiggy goose goose, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does, it does have minor hockey, or it does have Extreme logo on that sign, does it?
Correct, under color.
It is in their color here, right?
It's obviously like Murvillo. Like, even if we were removing their logo, everyone will know it's there or something.
So you're recommending a policy so that's even?
Yeah, that we can, can I, can I have a good look at it, and then I come back to council for its approval. But I want a bit of input where no more council, like, I, to, because my personal opinion, uh, it's, and it's my, it's only mine, it's not representing necessary council. I think we should have representation for our group in our building. But to a limit that allow us to subsidize, uh, our expense to operate that building as...
Yes. Well, again, I, I think this is more along the lines of everybody knowing what's going on here, right? And, and putting everything in perspective and, and having, uh, it go back to CSR department to develop a policy that they could bring forth to council, see if it works. And then if not, we can make changes, just like the fire, the, the fire.
So it's a work in progress right now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But like you say, I just wanted like to make aware everybody, because they have it in their package, okay, this is what's actually happening now. And just kind of put in perspective how much money we're, we're giving away and how, and the disparity between the organizations, right? Because I don't think any one organization should be above another when we're giving space away.
Yeah.
For our, for our group, right? And which is, which is pointed out by you in, in your report.
I, I would say though, um, Dominic, if we could respond to, like Melville, just to say that we're drafting a policy, so, because they're probably still waiting on that request from a couple of months ago, right?
I have a conversation with the vice president on, uh, Friday.
Okay, good, yeah.
Yeah, especially when we're getting ready for our winter games year, there may be more people who are gonna wanna advertise on that space too. Or even if it was something that you could set a cap on, or it could be time bound. I mean, I'm, I'm sure that minor soccer would wanna put something there in the same space during their soccer season. You know, I, even if it could be time bound, if we're gonna continue to do it, maybe they get two, three boards time bound and then it moves to another sport.
But that space, like you said, is in kind, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, like you said, if, if the boards are promulgated, I think that's where we should go to, in in kind. It should be an area within their arena for that. So whether there's a specific place on the ice surface, or there's banners being thrown overhead or whatnot and so forth. I mean, like, again, we can neglect it in our, though, as well, but I mean.
But we also talked...
Get up space for, you know, you know, revenue from, from, from businesses that would like to advertise either.
Yeah.
So we, we have to find a, a medium between both.
And we also talked about the other areas up behind the bleachers where they have just the white walls and stuff like that. But, but, you know, and I know jiggy 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 is there and it's in, uh, extreme colors and whatever, but jiggy 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 is universal. That's been a cheer in this town since the sixties. Whether it was room ball, whether it was volleyball, like, different teams that I've traveled on soccer, hot, it's, it's jiggy 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 if you're coming from...
Not just from hockey, is what you're saying.
Wasn't just from hockey, so.
Yeah, I, I understand.
The fact that it's in the hockey colors makes it seem like it's in a, an extreme chant, but it's, it's goes back to the, uh... It goes right back to the winter carnival on the base, that sort of stuff.
I understand that as well, but, well, from my point of view is, uh, it was put up for the tournament. Um, everybody knows, like I say, basically, we know that, everybody knows that. Nobody sees it until people coming from out of town as a sort of a support for that All-Star weekend. And that's a show of support for our All-Stars during that weekend. So I'm just looking at the regular day-to-day, the winter games, where you say are coming up, that our people are gonna want to buy that space. I think for, like, I mean, it's up to you, I mean, how you develop the policy, but I'm just on the mind of, we're wasting ten thousand dollars right here, um, for, like, we, we know this, we know the jiggy jiggy, and we know that in history. But when, when is it appropriate to have it up there? Should we have it up there all year round? Is what I'm saying, when there's, everybody in town knows what it is, sees what it is, and have it go up whenever we have that All-Star tournament, or whenever we have whatever. That's, that's...
Or have it somewhere else in the arena.
Right. Should that be one of those things that, like you said, painted on the wall so that it's a permanent fixture?
I mentioned hanging down too might be an option. I don't know if it is.
Anyway, like I said, it's good for discussion and I, and I, like I said, I'd like, I'd like to see things, uh, fair for the other groups. Uh, but that, that's where I'm to with it anyway, and I'm glad you, you brought it up and you heard everyone's counselors, all counselors' thoughts on it, so.
And when you think about the prime location, like, Extreme gets the center ice. Extreme gets the, the sign in the area where you're looking at it the most, where the scoreboard's to. And then Extreme also gets the jiggy 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 exactly where most of the spectators sit. So they have the monopoly, whether it's money or prime location.
But again, you can say that, you can say within the policy that during special events, that those special signs go up. In the regular season, it's just signs, and again, you can apply and buy whoever's got those stats, say, listen, during those things, we, we redirect things or whatever, and, uh, between the, I guess, the girl guides, uh, the girl guides to the figure skating and the minor hockey and whatnot, that we utilize spaces for specific tournaments and, and events within those, you know, um,
Yeah, yeah.
And just use that board specifically for, as things happen. Because if you only talking about weekends or minor hockey, you're talking about figure skating tournament, uh, host it once, twice a year, and then it could be posted up then and then removed, and then the actual.
Yeah.
And customers go back and place it.
And I'm on the mind of, like, doing the math, and we were talking about the new scoreboard in ten years, what amount of money we're giving away, we could have a scoreboard paid on, yeah.
We, there's no guarantee that we will recover that.
No, no, exactly. I'm just, that was just a thought in my mind.
I know some of the, they wouldn't pay like that. I don't think, like, if you talk priority with minor hockey, like, they wouldn't spend thirty-six hundred for that sign. Like, it's not in their priority. Their priority is to keep registration for hockey players cheap as possible.
So I mean, the policy can also reflect if, if, if available.
Yes.
Right? I mean, if you have ten businesses that are lining up wanting to buy advertising space at the arena.
Yeah.
Then, you know, your policy could reflect that. Uh, but I mean, we're not gonna solve it here tonight, but, uh...
No.
So you're gonna come back with a draft policy for next month?
Um, I should have a start, a draft before the next meeting, yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect. We'll have further discussion then, uh, maybe next week if it's available. If not, we'll have another discussion next month sometime.
Yeah.
CIO?
Uh, just one further note, that when advertisers or businesses do pay for their advertising, it's for one year. So we don't take them up, put them down for different events or tournaments, and we don't allow, uh, groups to cover them uh, during their particular event for that purpose. Now, sometimes if you've got a stage up there, it's gonna obviously block something, uh, but we don't allow them to intentionally put anything up, because people pay for the advertising, so that when people come into the arena, they see it.
Oh, absolutely, and I'm just wondering, does it make sense, can, is that based on our policies, say you buy, buy the year, or do we have the option to say?
Our pricing is by the year.
Can we break that up and say by the month? Because some people may wanna just advertise during the winter seasons, while others might wanna advertise during the summer seasons, and some might wanna do it like year round, so is there an option to say, maybe I only wanna do it for a couple of months?
But there's also options for them, for, for people to advertise elsewhere in the arena as well, not just on the, on the, on the boards, right?
Yeah, I know. We did have, we did have, we, actually, we said no to the winter games for covering up our current advertising, probably two months ago.
The bordering is the most popular. It's more space, but yeah, the, the finance policy, dig, like, which dictate what I can rent or sell is annual cost.
All right, next one?
Are we, that's it?
No, I got two more here.
Got two more?
There's two more in business. There's more in line of information sessions, and like I said, all this stuff brought to council. Uh, Newfoundland Rogues, uh, the basketball team wanna come. I know they went to Seschi last, I believe it was last winter. But I mean, the cost of this event for them to have two games here, a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, uh, would council entertain, something like bringing them in for, uh, for two games and, and, and this is here because it was brought to, it was brought to council, uh, to the last council.
To one town to pay a hundred and forty-three?
That's what they're, that's what they're expecting. For, for, for them to play two games here, probably have a couple of clinics with the local teams. Uh, they're asking for, uh, and they must have bid the budget a hundred and forty-three thousand. Basically, forty-three thousand for travel, fifteen thousand for hotels, eight thousand for meals, seven thousand for ground, uh, ground transportation, sixty-six thousand for league fees, I don't know what that is, and then others for four thousand. So, uh, again, like, there's no recommendation here, but I think it's more along the lines of an information session. And, uh, these, like I said, it's up to camp, we can just say to Dom, say, let's not do it.
Piece of playground equipment.
Well, it was brought, it was brought to council because Dom brought it to.
Yeah.
Brought it to here because it was brought to.
I mean, something like, what dates are you looking, what date are we looking at?
Well, right now, we're looking at a date. I'm talking with the owner, and he say like, well, like, he was looking in March, which this year with the calendar that we have is like absolutely crazy. I didn't give him a timeline when I will get back to him. Um, but before I turned it down, I wanted to bring back to council, so council don't find out. Like, do I take a hundred and forty-three thousand, is it recoverable? My briefing note say no. Like, we, we don't sell this.
Counsel, Counsel Rumble?
Um, what I liked about the information note is that there were four options, the A, B, C, and D given to us, um, from the extreme of one to the, like, A being not act on the opportunity at all, D being give them everything, but those B and C options, like, I mean, the option B, um, being that the town can decide to provide in kind support only and leave them to find additional funds. Um, you know, like, if, if in kind support, and I think we've often said that, that in kind support, when we can accommodate, is always an option. You're like, you don't wanna say, okay, yeah, you know what, we didn't offer our facilities. Um, now, it does mention in, um, option B, that it is unlikely that the project would go ahead. But at least then we've made the offer of in kind, because I mean, I, I feel like in kind support is something that we do. Um, we do it with Trapline, we do it with, you know, many different organizations where this is our donation as in the use of our facilities. Um, but we can't bankroll the whole thing, right?
I was gonna say, what could we contribute in kind? And, and Dominic, do you know, like, uh, how many people would this benefit? Is, is it open to the community? I, I know there's...
Or the model to, for them to record, or for us, or for them to recover, it's selling ticket. So anyone that will buy a ticket, or if there's an, an agency that buy a ticket to have them, but, like, the number, like, like, if we were going at the arena, we put like twelve hundred, like, it's going for two game, it's going to be a really, really hard sell. Like, we brought the NHL legend, like, we don't sell that.
I was just gonna say that hockey, the hockey tickets were set low, right, the sales, so...
Like, I don't, like, it's hard to put a number, but like, I talked to people that love basketball, talked to people that actually went to see the Rogue play when they went to St. John's, and they don't think we'll bring a thousand people. Like, if we bring three hundred people, uh, uh, it'd be exciting, but not for two game in a row. So unless someone comes and say like...
We gotta go look at the facility as well. We wouldn't be able to have it on the arena because we don't have a floor.
We can, they...
Right?
They, uh, they talked to the league, it would be an exhibition game, so they'd be willing to play on that blue floor. They said they're familiar with that. That's on my recor-, like, I send them picture of what we have, I send them the DIY court. I'm not the league, but they, they, I did send it to them. They said like, exhibition game, yeah, we know this. They, the Rogue objective is to make the St. John's team the provincial team.
Yes.
So they, they're planning, looking to go play western of the island. They are looking to come in Labrador.
So even if we, if, even if we, like, did in kind and said they could play one game on that floor.
Yeah.
They're, they might not be willing to take the risk to lose, because if they gotta do through ticket sales.
They, they, I thi- I think at this point it's unlikely, unless they found a, they have a sponsor that wanna bring them and say like, oh, we, we'll, we'll chip in the forty-three thousand, they can start looking at like, how much revenue we can, we can recover and help them. Uh, I think we can go back and, like, if council is...
Yeah, yeah, I would suggest just go back and get some answers to some of those questions.
Yeah, again, I gotta go back to that floor because I know that floor very well, and that's, basketball wouldn't be able to play on it. They say they're familiar, but I don't think they're looking at the same piece, because...
I, I, yeah.
I, I don't know if you, you've noticed, I noticed every time, like, even, uh, at the last winter games, Ababington, uh, Solo Cock, it, it would die, it dies on it, so how would a basketball react on it? I know it would die. It's not the same surface. So I think you would need to go back and say, okay, where we have it, because I, I know it's not gonna work over there on that blue floor.
Well, I, I told them what the floor was, I gave them the manufacturer, like, it's, and, like, yeah. I was really surprised when you came back and said like, yeah, the league will be agreeable.
I, I, I think you're looking at something.
I, I don't think it'll be a high performance, the athlete will be very happy, because your feet are gonna be frozen.
It'd be interesting to, uh, when the winter games comes, to, uh, bounce the basketball, see if it works.
Yeah.
I'd also like to consider how many user groups are using that, because we have a, a, we have a two, two men's tournaments happening this year. We have Omega, right, happening this year, like, it would be, I'm assuming it would be on a weekend if we were to consider it, and that would mean that would be weekend ice loss to... We have Omega, right, happening this year, like, it would be, I'm assuming it would be on a weekend if we were to consider it, and that would mean that would be weekend ice slots to Extreme, the Puckers, Men's League.
Yeah, but I think you're talking about around winter games, aren't you, when the floor is down?
Well, I don't, I don't see it happening this year. Like, it's, calendar is like totally full for us.
Yeah.
Like, it's like, as Counselor William said, like, we have two more tournament that we usually don't have, and then we, in addition, we have the Labrador Winter Game. And putting the floor like it's two days for the floor. Like, that blue floor take time to snap and put down.
All right, so we'll, we'll move on now because we're gonna go off track with about flooring.
Yeah.
But, uh, there's one more, the, uh, in age, uh, uh, well, information age-friendly action. Again, another information session for council so that they understand, uh, what this is and where it's to. Because I know it started in twenty twenty-two and then it started to progress, so I wanna give that, uh, to, I'll counsel an update on where that's to.
So, yeah, in, in twenty twenty-two, there was a, the town was successful acquiring fund to hire a consultant to do age-friendly plan for the community. Um, so that changed management hand few time, um, so I worked with the consultant, uh, which they did the public consultation with through a survey. Uh, we identified a list of, uh, key partner on it that we approached, have them to interview, produce a report. Um, and they, they submitted a report, and I realized today at four that I didn't send the report, the, the report in an independent attachment uh, for you, for you, your review, just you have it. Um, so the report was submitted, and first round, they give a feedback to the consultant to improve the, the report, which didn't necessarily move very far. Um, so, uh, I talked with the province, we can, I, there's no problem, we can accept their, the report and finalize the, the work with the consultant. So the next step is more for us to try to engage and create an age-friendly aging welcoming in the community. Which I will, like the briefing note explained, which I will, uh, appoint our, uh, program coordinator to lead the project based on some of their recommendations. And the challenge with the report is like, it's very generic, so it's not like, okay, we have a, a list of like ten items that we should do, that's really well evaluated. Talk a lot about reevaluating this, or evaluating this. Uh, so we're committing in place what allows to identify that. And, um, also the other thing is like these pillar in age-friendly that are not the mandate of the town, like access to health services, it's not, uh, it's not our, uh, our work, it's not what we do, but if we work with the committee, they can do that, that portion, advocate towards that, so we, we guide them. Um, so that will be a slow progress, uh, from that file, but wanted to know.
Any questions for me? I think that's, that's it. That's, I, I'm, I'm, I'm glad we're having, um, that committee formed, because it is, like you said, you're engaging your seniors, and this is what we talked about, uh, uh, earlier on this week, is how do we engage our community, whether, whether it's the youth, whether it's the senior, whether, and this is exactly what we're looking at, right, so. All right, thanks for your work on that, Dominic.
So that's, that's pretty well it for committee to hold, and I, CAO, you got anything to add, or wanna add anything to our discussion tonight? So we'll, uh, I guess we'll call for the chairman to meeting right now.
To adjourn.
And move on into our, uh, closed meeting now in a few minutes, we'll take a, take a break. So we're off the air, Margaret?
Yeah.